Good morning, folks, and a very warm welcome to the Infrastructure Investment and Inclusive Growth Scrutiny Board, and welcome to everyone watching online. We have to remind you that this meeting will be being webcast, and if you do want to go back and watch it again, then you are really welcome to via the link on the meeting webpage. For the benefit of members of the public watching online, we will now all introduce ourselves. So my name's councillor Hannah Bithall, and I chair this board. I'll go round to my left, just members of the board for now, and I'll do introductions with officers afterwards. And just remember to turn your mic off when you're done talking. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. My name's Andrew Scaates. I'm a councillor for the Beeston-Halbert Ward. Thank you, Chair.
Good morning, everybody. Councillor Asgari representing Gipton &amp; Hairhills.
Morning, everyone. My name's Sonia Layton, councillor for Geisley &amp; Rawdon.
Good morning, everybody. My name's councillor Jones, and I represent the Ward of Horstford.
Morning, everybody. Councillor Katie Dye from Kilinbecon Seacroft.
Morning, everyone. I'm councillor Karen Bruce, Arty and Robin Hoodward.
Good morning, everyone. Councillor Hampshire, Dad Martin and me, Ward.
Good morning, everyone. Councillor Tim Goodall, Headman in Hyde Park, substituting for councillor Motin Ali.
Good morning, everyone. Councillor Diane Chapman from Rochwell Ward.
Councillor Matthew Robinson from the Harewood Ward.
Good morning. Councillor Neil Buckley from All Woodley Ward.
Becky Atherton, scrutiny adviser to the board.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll go through items number one to five, Becky, if you can run through those, please.
Certainly, Chair. Item one, appeals. There are no appeals against refusal of inspection documents today. Items two, there are no items excluded from the public domain. Item three, no late items. Item four, declarations of interest. Can I ask members to disclose any interests in accordance with the council's code of conduct? Take silence as none. And then item five, apologies. We have apologies received from councillor Ali, and councillor Goodall is attending as a substitute.
Thank you. We move on to item six, which is the minutes from the 24th of September. On minute 30, the correspondence on refuse livery will be going out shortly. We've had the estimated costs now all confirmed, and I will be sending that out to all members to see if we can get some promotion for Vision Zero on our refuse trucks, which is very exciting. Has anyone got any amendments to the minutes, or are we all content? Somebody can propose them. Thank you, councillor Ali. And second, councillor Jones, thank you. And we will move on to the work schedule, please. Becky, you have to run through.
Members will find a draft work schedule at page 19 for their consideration. If I could just draw your attention as a reminder to the fact that a working group is taking place at 9:45 this Friday to consider issues that emerged from performance monitoring discussions in June, specifically around unemployment rates and business support. It's intended that that discussion on Friday will then inform consideration of the inclusive growth strategy on the 26th of November. And if you could just note it's taking place in the Bernard Atha Room because there's some technical works going on in here.
Thank you. Okay, and we'll move straight on to item eight. And just for the benefit of officers, we've already discussed it in the pre-meeting. Timings for this meeting are relatively tight, so it may be that not all questions are able to be asked. If that's the case, I'll email those questions to you guys for written answers afterwards, if that's okay. Thank you very much. So, thank you so much for bringing this update to us. I am always delighted, and I mentioned in the pre-meeting, that it's such a beautiful thing when officers want to come to scrutiny, and want to show off what they're doing, and want to ask for sort of our input. I just think we are so much more effective when we come from that stance, and I think it's really lovely that on today's agenda, we've got two separate papers that officers have asked to bring in front of us, which is great. I think it's also wonderful that for those of you at home that keep real good tabs on this scrutiny board, in our last series, last municipal year, there was discussion around potholes and highways maintenance, and one of the things that we asked for was more work to be done on the innovative methods that are available. And then this year, we have back an innovative methods report that shows a whole load of piloting that's been done, and some really, really positive outcomes. So again, that's really nice to be able to link it back to work we've done previously and see the impact of that. And of course, when it's about potholes, we know how much our residents and constituents are interested in that. So, with no further ado, because I've said it at time short, we'll move on to introductions from officers and the exec member, please.
Good morning, everyone. Gary Bartlett, Chief Officer for Highways and Transportation.
Morning, everybody. Simon Swift, Executive Manager for Highways Asset Management and Development.
Good morning, everyone. Tony Pennistain, Principal Engineer, Asset Management.
Good morning, everyone. Philip Mitchell, Engineering and Infrastructure Manager in Highways and Transportation.
Good morning. Ian Moore, Leeds City Councils Highways Asset Manager.
Can I just ask everyone to bring their mics a bit closer so we can hear a little better? Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Hopefully you can hear me. My name's Adrian Hodgson. I'm the traffic manager in the network management section of Highways and Transportation.
Good morning. Councillor Jonathan Prior, Deputy Leader of Leeds City Council and Executive Member for Economy, Transport and Sustainable Development.
Thank you very much. And we do also have, sitting off-screen, a work experience student today, and I am delighted that you're here, Nathan, to engage with us. And in fact, if anyone else ever wants to do work experience and come and watch us, these meetings are also public. You could come down and watch live and in person. So, I will... Any introductory comments from our exec member or Gary? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I'll just make some very brief comments, really just drawing out the main points of the report, if I may, because time is short. So obviously, this report responds to the recommendations of the last scrutiny, and those recommendations are Appendix A. Some of the key points I would draw out, as you said yourself, there's details in the report about the trialling of new and innovative equipment, and the report highlights considerable work that's been done in that space over the last 12 months. It also, the report also details, as always in these instances, our funding position for highways maintenance, and we remain grateful for the support that the council has always given us over about 15, certainly since I've been here in this area. Significant contributions from the council into highways maintenance because of its importance to the local communities, and you will note in the report that there are hopefully plans to actually inject more at the February meeting of council next year. Having said that, just to put that into perspective, the highways maintenance backlog remains and is significant, and we remain in a managed decline position because of the overall asset position on site and because of the national funding situation. You'll also see in the report results of the National Highways and Transportation Public Satisfaction Survey that we participate in. That's from paragraph 15 onwards. And whilst there's always room for improvement, what the results highlight is that we are comparing favourably with the national average, but we are not complacent, and we continue to identify improvements. There's also reference in the report to our plans to improve communications in this space, and in particular, colleagues are working on a members' SharePoint page. I say page, but it will be pages, because the idea is that it will provide useful information not only on highways maintenance work, but also across all highways and transportation work, which hopefully members will be able to use and access, and then be able to inform constituents of issues. We hope to have that ready this financial year, maybe this id of Christmas, subject to review. And then finally, from paragraph 33 onwards, there's a significant amount of the report relating to network management function, coordination of works, which we were asked to provide and happy to provide, and the excellent work that goes on in that space, but is really challenging because of the amount of work that does occur on the highway network. And it also includes an update on lane rental proposal, which, if members recall, we were aiming to submit to the Secretary of State in September. Pleased to report, we did submit it, and we await approval of that lane rental proposal, which will, has the potential to help us out in this area of work. And I'll leave it there, Chair, because there's lots of opportunities here for members to ask some questions. Thank you.
Just to introduce the report, myself as well as the exec member, first of all, just want to pay huge tribute to the team. There's a phenomenal amount of work that goes on across the city. Sometimes it feels a bit like painting the fourth bridge. There's always more and more to do. I think every member knows how much kind of potholes comes up from residents, and actually, something as a city, it's something we've really suffered from over the past 15 years. As funding to local government has been cut, this is something which has suffered, and we've got a huge backlog as a result. It's why I'm particularly pleased to draw the board's attention to point 23 in the paper, which is about some of the new innovative methods we have in filling in potholes. When I became exec member for this portfolio just over a year, the number of people who sent me YouTube videos of various things around the world saying, "Oh, just do this. This is simple. Just do this. This is simple." Some of them are a bit more complicated, and I'm really pleased that we're doing a detailed piece of work on looking at what's best. This has been a subject to council questions in the past, I know. I mean, looking down the options, the JCB Pothole Pro is a very interesting piece of kit. It's like a Thunderbird that comes in and fills in your potholes. The thermal road repair, the spray injection patching, these are things which could make a real difference on our roads, and I'm really pleased that we're now in a position where we can look at these innovative methods to get on top of that backlog of work, which needs doing, which isn't to kind of underestimate how large that backlog of work is. As well as that, I'm really pleased we've submitted to the Secretary of State on lane rental. Again, it's something that comes up with residents all the time about how long road works can take, particularly from, I think it's something like 250 outside bodies have got the permissions to dig up roads for various reasons, and this is the sort of thing that can help make sure that when work is being done on roads by these external bodies, it can be done as quickly as possible, leading to less disruption to residents. So with that, I will pass over to officers to talk through some of the detail. Thank you.
Are there any officers that would like to give further comments, or shall I open to member questions? Lovely. Okay, councillor Bruce.
Yeah, the thing that's always raised with us about the third-party repairs and coordination of works is that there doesn't seem to be any coordination, because you'll get a street dug up, and, you know, seemingly it's all sorted, and then somebody else will come and dig it up from another agency, and then the next one, of course, as well. So what coordination actually is there, you know, that we can reassure residents about?
Thank you, councillor. The section from paragraph 45 in the report details the sort of various coordination processes that we go through in the network management team. First and foremost, we have a big reliance on our permit scheme that has been very successful in reducing the duration of works and the coordination of works. Prior to the implementation of the permit scheme, the only requirement for utilities was to notify us that work was taking place, and since 2020, we've expanded the permit scheme to cover all streets in the Leeds district. The particular challenge that you've mentioned around streets being re-dug up again is a recurring issue. It's obviously one that concerns us as officers as much as it does residents and councillors. We do have set processes with quarterly coordination meetings where those types of works should be identified on a forward plan so that we can actively manage when works come forward. And obviously, the ideal situation for that would be for those disruptive works that utilities need to undertake are done prior to our own services coming and resurfacing the roads. That's not always possible, but where we do carry out reconstruction works, there is a protection that's applied, a guarantee effectively, to the road surface of between sort of two and three years, depending on the nature of the reconstruction that takes place. And that does restrict utilities coming in, but there are certain caveats that allow them to come in and dig up a freshly laid road. Those would include, for example, emergencies, which will be very familiar to all councillors, I'm sure, and are often the most disruptive type of work that we have to deal with because they are unplanned. In those circumstances, what we do try and do is ensure that the work that the utilities do to reinstate the road goes the extra mile, so to speak, where, you know, do half-width reinstatements, full-width reinstatements, where that's possible, rather than just doing the legal minimum. It is a challenge. We hope to drive improvement on that as we continue with our lane rental scheme as well, because one of the benefits of the scheme will be that we have much better dialogue with utilities on forward planning, because one of the areas where utilities will be able to get waivers or discounts is to demonstrate to us that they are working with us, planning better, to avoid exactly the type of concern that you've raised.
Yeah, thanks for that. Yeah, I understand, you know, what it says in the report and, you know, what you've said, but in practice, you know, that is what's happening, and it doesn't seem to be improving at the moment. Yeah, it's, you know, we do need the system to work better. Are you confident that this is going to change things, then?
I think the, it's important for us as a highway authority to make sure that we've got those protections in place and facilitate those forward planning meetings. So we do those every quarter, and we do stress to all utility companies and our own internal promoters that they need to get their works, their planned works, on a forward plan. It may be difficult for some of the utilities because they work on a five-year funding cycle. Yorkshire Water and Northern Gas Networks have just started their five-year funding cycle, so we're having quite a lot of discussions with them at the moment. So hopefully, that will ensure that we're getting accurate information that we can put into our system that will flag when our own schemes come forward, and are also put into the system that there's a potential clash there, and we need to coordinate that in a way that ensures that the highway asset is protected and that the works are done in the right sequential way.
Thank you. It's interesting, in terms of the forward planning stuff, there is a real difficulty in getting utilities to work together. But I will take this opportunity that when we had an issue, and it was a hell of an issue in the middle of our ward highways-wise, the, our team were really effective at just pushing back all of their stuff so that at least anything that would have then been additionally difficult wasn't additionally difficult for the most part. We had a few teething problems, but the impact of having a highways team that was reactive was really important there. But I think, and that really speaks to one of the recommendations that I'm going to suggest, so I'll bring up now, is that the utilities need to work better with each other. We can do so much as a highways authority, but actually, they have the legal right to basically, in a lot of cases, dig up wherever they want, whenever they want. So actually, it's how we can lobby them with soft political power to be more considerate of the population at large. And one of the suggestions and recommendations that I was going to propose is to invite utilities companies to a meeting next year to discuss how best they can cooperate with each other and with us as a highways organisation, if that's something that members are in favour of. Lovely. Okay, good. I will give that a little tick. And with that, I'll move on to councillor Layton, please.
Thank you, Chair. I've got two questions, actually. The first one is relating to utilities. I know that, I think we fine utility companies when they overrun in terms of any road works they're doing, but I was interested, do we actually fine them, for example, Yorkshire Water, if they don't fix leaks within a timely manner? Because of course, that erodes the surface of the road and causes damage, and certainly in my ward, I'm sure others are the same. We've seen leaks untreated for weeks and weeks and weeks. So I've got a question on that. And also, what revenue do we generate from the fines that we're applying at the moment? I'd like to know that as well. And then my second question is just actually, you know, the root cause of all of this, I think is a lot of traffic as well on the road, as well as weather, but active travel, we seem to have very limited budgets to really do anything with that and actually get cars off the road. So my question is, like, how do you guys link in with active travel? Are you pushing for extra budgets in this space? Yeah, those are my questions.
Perhaps if I try to pick up a couple of those, but Adrian, you'd be on standby for some of the... So on the active travel one, so obviously, across highways and transportation, we have transport strategy team that is a fundamental part of the service, and we have a transport strategy that is around promoting public transport, cycling and walking, and it has the strapline of a city where you don't need to own a car. So I think that gives you the level of ambition, and it is very ambitious, and it was recognised in this room at the exec board that it was very ambitious, but it was the right thing to aim for. So we do pursue significant funding via the combined authority, and obviously at a national level as well, but it is a finite pot. So we also work closely with Active Travel England, who are there to promote sustainable travel, and we have a good reputation with them in terms of the work that we do and the quality of the work that we do. So I think over the last 10 years, the amount of work that we've done on public transport, cycling, walking, has been very significant, tens of millions of pounds, but we all know that there is much more to do to get to where that ambition of the transport strategy is. But I think compared to other cities, we've moved the dial quite a bit in that decade. Adrian may be able to put some significant numbers around how much we generate. All I would say into that is that there's quite a large team that works in network management, and the money that does come in helps support and fund that team to actually interrogate and try to coordinate. The 40,000-odd openings of the Carriageways that happen each year, and it's, in one way, it's a negative, isn't it? Because all the congestion that is mentioned and the coordination issues that's been mentioned, but also it's almost a proxy for how well the city is doing in terms of the development that's taking place that's requiring some of these openings, because some of it is related to the supply of utilities to new housing, new developments in the city as well. So you can see a positive, but you can also see a negative. I'll hand over to Adrian to pick up some of the specifics.
Thanks, Gary. Yeah, there are probably three key areas where poor performance impacts on utilities' finances, shall we say. The first one was introduced in 2023, and there's a new regime now with inspections. We're required by government to do a sample of inspections of all utility sites, and since 2023, that is now very much related to the performance of the utility company. So essentially, we do more inspections, which we are paid to do by the utilities if they perform poorly. Conversely, if they did well with their performance, the number of inspections goes down, so they're referred to as PBIs. So there's a financial incentive there for utilities to perform better. And we do three different types of inspection associated with that. We do inspections on live sites, when the works are actually taking place, and with particular reference to the item today on the asset, the highway asset, we do two different types of inspections. One immediately after the works have taken place and have left the site to check that there are no defects, or if there are defects, obviously, pick that up with the utility companies. And then a further inspection on a sample just before the guarantee period runs out. And again, if we discover defects, there is then a process around that where we visit, we obviously raise that with the utilities and the knock-on effects of them having to put that right, which again, reinvests back into the highway network. The other two areas that impact on utilities' finances and should drive performance are our FPN, Fixed Penalty Notice regime, and this is an offer to discharge, an offence, a permit offence. So the most, one of the most severe ones of that is working without a permit. Obviously, if a utility is doing that, we're not aware of that, so we haven't been able to coordinate that activity, and it could clash, and it could crucially be dangerous because we've not assessed it properly. The alternative to FPNs is obviously to prosecute, and that is the ultimate sanction that we have with the utility should their performance become so bad that that becomes necessary. And the other area of fees that we receive are through Section 74 overruns. So this is a section within the New Roads and Street Works Act, which effectively penalises utilities if they give us poor information and they overrun on their sites. So as part of the coordination process, we check and challenge what utilities are proposing to us, which wouldn't have been able, we wouldn't have been able to do before the permit scheme. So I've got a team of excellent officers that are duration-challenging the utility companies. They might want to come and access our streets for, say, two weeks. The knowledge and expertise that the team have got will drive that down to what we agree to be a reasonable figure, and if they overrun that reasonable period, then the Section 74 charges kick in because that will be down to some sort of bad performance, unless there's some unforeseen circumstances that come to light. In terms of lane rental in the future, obviously, that will introduce a very significant fee for performance, and that will drive collaboration, that you mentioned councillor Bithall. One of the incentives in the lane rental scheme will be to force, or try to force, utilities to work together to collaborate, and if they do that, the fees that they have to pay on the lane rental network, which will be about 10% of the highway network, I should stress, will come down. So there's a financial incentive for them to do that, and it makes other ways of working economically viable. In terms of the overall fees that we earn, as Gary's alluded to, the fees that we earn from the permit scheme, it's to pay for the running of the scheme. It should be a cost-neutral scheme. The fees that we receive for FPNs and Section 74s are over and above that, and our typical budget income target, not a target, our typical income is around £3 million a year, but as I say, the vast majority of that is for the running of the permit scheme, which is a cost-neutral scheme. The particular example that you gave around Yorkshire Water not accepting responsibility for leaks, that is a particular problem that we're trying to address in the service, and it crosses my team and it crosses the teams in Simon's area as well. Often, Yorkshire Water can deny responsibility when it's fairly self-evident to us that it is their responsibility, and that does lead to a poor level of performance, obviously, for the residents of Leeds, because it then becomes a responsibility on us as the highway authority to essentially investigate a given leak and demonstrate effectively that it is a Yorkshire Water issue rather than a council issue, and that is an ongoing problem, and it's one that we're very aware of.
I think that's a really important point that you've made around the erosion, and also, when these works are going on, the HGVs that are travelling on our roads and the impact of that. So we'll make a note of that and potentially bring that into the following meeting. Did you have something you wanted to come back on quickly?
I only say thank you, it was a really comprehensive update, and it, I mean, it would be good if, £3 million a year sounds quite a lot of money, but I guess it depends on how many delays there have been, so if we could get some unit economics, some, like, that would be helpful to give us some more context. I'm not sure if you have that, because if there's, I don't know, a million delays, it probably doesn't equate to a lot, very much in terms of a penalty average, which I think would be good to see. Does that make sense? Perfect.
Yeah, so more detail on the fixed penalties and how they are operated. I also thought it was interesting, talking about the city where you don't need a car, and that almost in this meeting sounded like it's a target. We have to remember that there's a really substantial population in the city that don't own a car already, so it's already a city that doesn't need a car, because people are having a city that doesn't need a car. What it is, is really difficult for those people. And I say that as somebody that didn't have a car very recently. So, we'll move on to councillor Buckley next. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. At paragraph 13 and 14, there's an explanation as to how much extra is needed or would be needed to tackle the backlog. And I noticed that I've got a document from, I don't know whether it's last year or the year before, but it gives highway spending every year from 2010 to 2026/27, and this document indicates a total of 20... total of £28.5 million to be spent. But on page 66, the total there for 26, 27 appears to be only £26 million. So am I right in thinking that we've not even allowed for inflation, but we're actually spending less in cash terms than we were intending to? That's my first question, Chair. Secondly, at paragraph 20, there's reference to several external companies have received DFT accreditation as compliant with the requirements to assess and provide road condition data. To ensure that we are fully compliant in Leeds, a review of available service providers is to be undertaken. Well, if they've been accredited, what's the point of a review? And my final question is, on the paragraph 23, the reference to these various machines, and there are photographs in the documents later on about what they all do and so on. But I was just wondering whether councillors could see these things in action, to actually look at them, so to get them in your mind as to what is available. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Buckley. On your last point, I've already requested that me and councillor Prior can go and have a look at these in action, but I'm sure we could widen that if other people would like to come and have a play too. So you would be wildly welcome, I'm sure. Not least because officers, I think, kind of want to show them off. So I think the more people that can come and have a look at them, actually, the better. Officers, anyone would like to respond to the other comments?
Thank you, councillor. If I understood your, your first question correctly around the spend, I mean, certainly what we have spent over this most recent cycle of available funding has been impacted, as most things have, with significant increases in costs, which obviously we have to absorb because that is a fixed allocation around the CRSTS allocation. So that does have to be allowed for. And the other element that perhaps affects how the figures look is, we took a decision to, rather than take the available funding and split it evenly across the five years, we made a deliberate decision to profile the works so that we would do more in the middle of this five-year block, the intention being to avoid schemes having to be carried over in the latter part of the, the allocation. Now, we do intend to review that and see whether we feel that has been effective, so that when we move into the TCR allocation, we feel we will be better informed and better positioned to make sure that we allocate the funding in a, in a more appropriate manner. In terms of the reference that you made to having to receive accreditation, that's in preparation for the transition to the past 2161 standard for road analysis. I think, as the report mentions, for many years, it's been a technique called scanner, and that is considered to be outdated. And obviously, technology's moved on to such an extent that it can be far more accurate. So effectively, I suppose the best way to, to think of it is, the companies that wish to provide this service have to get DFT accreditation and demonstrate that the systems that they would operate will give consistency across the work that they do. What we would be required to do anyway as officers is to evaluate those companies that we feel represent best value in terms of what we as an authority are looking to achieve. So we've been working with one of those companies over the last three years in order to develop our own understanding of AI technology and what that can do for us in terms of assessing the network. And we've also got a meeting in the diary with, with a second company, because we, we want to be certain that we choose the best partner to work with in terms of demonstrating compliance around the past 2161 approach. Sorry, just, just the third question?
It was about looking at these machines.
Yeah, I think that's been covered off, I think.
Yeah, I've already extended an invite without asking anyone, as is the story of my life. But I can because I've got a mandate. Okay, I also have a mandate as chair of scrutiny to remind everyone that we now have 15 minutes left on this item, and I've got four councillors and myself with questions. So I'm going to stop taking questions from councillors now, and we'll move on to councillor Di. And if everyone can be as brief as possible but still effective, that would be ideal. Thanks.
Yeah, well, I, I don't know whether I really need to ask this because my question was about the new technologies. Very interested in them, particularly from a carbon reduction point of view. I know there are trials going on, but I don't know if anybody's able to share any interim information because I think it's potentially really interesting development.
Yeah, as Ian says, we've been working with a company for the last three years, and that's been collecting an awful lot of data of our network. Our network's split into 250-metre lengths rather than roads, and we've got 22,000 of those sections. At the moment, we have engineers, as is said in paragraph six, that it takes us four years to do the local road system. We've now got a system where we have safety inspections that's driven on a quarterly and monthly basis. They make up 46% of the network. That's A, B and C roads. So we get that refreshed by AI data every month or every three months. So there's 56% of the network that isn't done. So what we've done is we've done a trial in three wards, we've gone out there, and we can roughly drive 14 kilometres a day, which means it'll take us 127 days to do the remaining network of that. I've got three inspectors, so that works out about 42 days apiece, which is about eight weeks. So in eight weeks, we can have the whole network covered with AI technology, which is a significant improvement to the four years it's currently taking us. What in reality that means is that we will be able to look at the engineer's assessments, compare with them with the AI, and say, we've got a green, green, which is good, good. We don't need to have a look at it. We've got a green, we've got a red. Well, it were green because engineers inspected it four years ago, AI saying it's red, we can go out. So we'll get better information on that. That information has now been embedded into the new software that we've got. We only got this software, a new asset management system on December 2nd last year. And we can now press a button, see the engineer's inspection, see the AI, click on a link, and it goes straight to the video that's been taken by the AI, and you can actually drive it on the day that it was done. So that means that we're going to get better, more accurate programmes, more up-to-date programmes, and possibly the right streets. I think we do a fantastic job of getting the right streets on there, but there's an awful lot that's beyond the five-year programme. Well, maybe some of those might get into the five-year programme because we've got refreshed data. Coming up, we talk about past 2161. That's basically a system that grades it. Very good, no maintenance required. Good, minor works, curbs, patches. Fair, dispatching or surface dressing, micro asphalt. Poor is overlays or extensive patching and then reconstructing in the final band. We're concentrating on them, two top bands, the very poor and the poor bands. So we'll be able to target them two bands, which is what we generally do, but we're probably going to get more in there. That, past 2161, has been accredited by these companies. One of those is the supplier that we're working with. I've been told that will be in our system by November, December. So we'll be able to see what our network is comparable with other authorities. The technology that's coming in will also, at the current moment in time, allows us to pick up the road markings, whether it's 100%, 30%, 50% or non-existent. And so we can pick that up. That will go into our system so we can coordinate an effort to refresh road markings. And it will also pick up low gullies and manholes. And the new system will also pick up traffic signs, which we've currently got. So I can tell you, if you open the Highway Codebook, choose any sign, I can click on that sign in our system, tell you exactly where they are graphically on a map and how many I've got. The new system will tell you, not only will it tell you where that sign is, it'll tell you whether it's dirty, graffiti, obscured, or what have you. So I can have a list of signs that we need to prioritise. Same with pedestrian guardrails and crash barriers. So they're all coming. So we're looking forward to that in November, December, and then in, hopefully next year, when we get programmes of work, we can target more areas. Hopefully, that's a bit more information for you, and hopefully quick enough.
I mean, that is wild. Just absolutely wild that that's available to us so soon. Did you have a follow-up? Very quickly.
Well, only if anybody's able to tell me in, in less than a minute, anything about the three new road repair trials. I'm conscious of time, that's all.
Yes, councillor, I'll, I'll try and do that. You mentioned about carbon reduction and the three trials. We've tried to pick three quite different things. The probably, it's fair to say some surpassed expectations, and one of them, we've not done a proper trial yet. That's planned later in the year. But some didn't quite meet the expectations that we had. And one of the big benefits was around carbon reduction, particularly in the thermal road repair, whilst it's quite a relatively slow process. So productivity's nothing like we get from conventional patching. It's actually, we've done a lot of cost analysis on it and the different options, whether we purchase a machine or rent, or the trial we use, used their own operatives because we needed the experience. But there's a potential for us to take that process over. And that, that's, when we do the evaluation, we'll be looking at not just value for money, but also carbon reduction, health and safety benefits. And it's fair to say that, that, that really surpassed expectations, and there's, there's potentially a pathway for use of that in future programmes.
Brilliant. Thank you. Councillor Robinson?
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, and I look forward to driverless technology and robots doing the road surveys in future as well. I'm not going to send officers around to do it in a van with a camera. Two questions, please, if that's okay. You mentioned about the utilities works that are there. If utilities companies do not complete the repairs to an adequate standard in an adequate timeframe, do officers have the ability to prevent them having licence in future? So you can halt it until they do the backlog of works that are there, or you can attach the bill to their next permit? And the fixed penalty, penalty notices that you issue for them, are they able to be ring-fenced to the wards where they're raised so that they can go towards roads maintenance and safety in those wards from the utility companies? The second question is around roads maintenance. So where vehicles are blocking the road or parked and the officers are not able to complete roads maintenance, what do we do in those instances? Are we retrospectively issuing temporary traffic regulation orders? And do we not pay for the work? So why are we paying for work that doesn't get done?
Perhaps if I, I know the background to the second question. Maybe you pick up the first one, though, Adrian. So the second one, we, it's really unfortunate that in some areas, we have, for whatever reason, some residents that will not move their car despite notices being given. And as a highway authority, we have surprisingly little powers to actually move that vehicle on. So we do rely on, to a great extent, community spirit and hopefully having a word locally to actually ask that neighbour to move the car. But I know in some areas that, that hasn't proved successful. So it's a frustration to us, and I'm, I'm sure it's a frustration to the local community. We will try and revisit when we can, but at some point, we do need to move on, which I know causes issues. On that particular instance, I think that councillor Robinson is alluding to, I'll double check with colleagues where that one is outside of scrutiny, if that's okay. Adrian, can you pick up the others?
Certainly. Yeah, in terms of the utility failures and doing poor reinstatements, that's, that's specifically one of those areas that we target in our sample inspections. So I referred to the, the three stages of sample inspections that we, we look at, the, the second two being the ones that deal predominantly with the quality of the asset and the reinstatement that's been, that's been implemented by a utility. These works will come with typically with a two-year guarantee period, and that's why our inspections are targeted, to look at the, at these reinstatements immediately after the work has been completed, to check that there's no defects there that need to be addressed immediately, and immediately before the guarantee period runs out, clearly in the interest of protecting our, our highway assets. Should they obviously fail those, those inspections, the utility is required to put those, those defects right, and that will then generate obviously another permit, and the cycle starts again. If it's beyond the guarantee period, if we suspected there was a pattern of poor reinstatements, we could do investigatory works. But there's pros and cons with investigatory work, such as coring. If we thought there were, there was poor reinstatements being done by a particular contractor or a particular utility, then we, we could action a programme of coring, for example, to check if the specifications that the contractor had used were up to scratch. The obvious negative of, of that is, it may not prove that it is being installed against the specification incorrectly, and the cost of doing that would then have to be borne by the service, service. So there's clearly, we don't do that lightly. The benefits are fairly obvious. So if we do uncover that a utility has not laid a reinstatement in accordance with the specification, then we can take action, even if it's beyond the guarantee period. In terms of utilities, statutory rights, unfortunately, poor performance won't remove those, those licences, particularly obviously the, the big, the big ones that we're, we're all familiar with. They have those statutory powers, but the performance regime is intended to pick them up on that. And ultimately, we can take more severe action, prosecutions and things like that if it came to that. In terms of the results that we're getting out of sample inspections, I'm conscious of time. I can go through that in a bit more detail after the meeting or during the meeting, but the picture isn't as bad. We do compare quite well across, when we compare ourselves to the rest of the country or the rest of Yorkshire in terms of the results we're getting back from our sample inspections. And it's important to stress that we do other inspections as well as the sample inspections that are required through legislation. And if members or anybody become aware of defects on the carriageway that are associated, or footway that are associated with the utility works, if they contact us in the normal way, our inspectors will check those out. And if indeed there is a defect and it's within a guarantee period, we will take action, as you would expect. In terms of, I think the, the last point was about FPN fees. This is an offer to discharge, obviously, an offence. The, the money essentially comes into the running of the service. It's not ring-fenced anywhere. I think that goes beyond sort of my, my area really, and where potentially we could direct our resources. But I don't believe that it's ring-fenced in any particular area.
Okay, thank you. I've got councillor Chapman and councillor Shazad, and two minutes. So you get 30 seconds seats and then a minute for answers. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Very quickly then, if WICHA has received the transport funding allocation for 27, 28, but is still to allocate it out, do we know what percentage increase WICHA got in funding, given that we need 27% increase, if that makes sense? And secondly, on the lane rental scheme, it complements rather than, it complements the permit scheme. Is there any point at which it would maybe be the priority? Or will there be parity? Or will it always be a junior part of, of how we manage utilities?
Thank you, Chair. Just a couple of questions from paragraph 17 onwards. How has the trial of patching it first time properly, instead of doing the quick fix that we used to do, how has that gone? And has that actually saved us money? Or is it cost-effective? And have those potholes now, if you've patched them correctly first time, have they lasted longer? And have we not had to go repeat, patch again, like we, like we used to do before? And the other thing is, this is sunken utility works, the iron works for the utilities, who's responsible for them? Because a lot of residents feel like the council's responsible when the iron works are sunk, and they cause a clatter and damage to especially alloy wheels, and we- And we get lots of complaints about that. But is our team responsible for them? Or is it utilities? And who's the best person to get that looked at? That's all. Thank you.
Perhaps if I start with the funding one. My recollection is that for CRSTS, the first that we're in, the five-year period that we're in, WICA got something like 1.6 billion across all programmes. And in in for TCR, the the figure circa is 2.1 billion. But there's about 1.2 billion in there for mass transit. So it's all, it's quite complicated in terms of how it's going to be divvied up. And that's a process that's ongoing with WICA and obviously the district councils over the next few months. But certainly in key areas like highways maintenance, asset management and vision zero, because of inflation, construction costs, we are looking, asking for significant uplifts. But obviously that's yet to be determined.
Yeah, just if I can add councillor, so the the process that we go through in terms of the TCR allocation, as Gary's alluded to, they refer to as buckets. So we, there's a highways asset management bucket. And we produce a strategic outline case on a regional basis. So I work closely with my colleagues across the other four West Yorkshire regions in order to put an overall bidding. And then from that, we then get with the value, with the money that's allocated specifically to asset management, we then get a percentage relative to the size of our network. So we would receive a slightly bigger allocation than the other four local authorities. But we do submit a bid as a as a collective.
Thank you. And I think the two remaining areas were lane rental and sunken utility lids. With with lane rental, that was, the the permit scheme will continue to be a very successful method of controlling works across all our highway network. It applies to 100% of the highway network. The lane rental scheme applies to the most critical parts of our highway network. And if it's successful, if it's approved by the Secretary of State, will apply to about 10% of the highway network. So the two will complement one another. And we do have the ability with the lane rental to scheme to review it on an annual basis and make minor changes to it, slightly grow the network should we feel that that's that's appropriate. But the permit scheme will continue to to operate and will be the the fallback position, for example, where lane rental won't apply. They'll still have to pay a permit fee if the lane rental fee has been waived because of good performance, for example. The remaining query was about sunken utility lids. And utilities do have a responsibility to maintain their apparatus in the same way that we have a responsibility to maintain ours. It's called a section 81 defect where there's a sunken utility lid. The best way of dealing with that really is just to report it to the the service in in the normal way. And then we will contact the utility to make them aware that there's a problem with their apparatus. There may be, there may be detail around that that we'll have to address. They may say that the the reason a utility apparatus has failed is because of the surrounding highway network. And then it becomes obviously a conversation about what caused the problem. But the starting assumption on a on a sunken lid like that would be that it's a utility's responsibility. And we would raise it with them.
We can't councillor Shazad, I'm very sorry, but can you email me and I'll get a written response for you? Yeah, can somebody answer about patching first time really fast? Thanks.
I'll try and be as quick as I can councillor. Unfortunately, there's no quick answer to that. The terms of success, we'd only know in sort of 15, 20 years' time, whether that's actually in terms of whole lifecycle planning, whether that's been a success. But the conventional patching that we did offers a far more long-term fix. And we've had no reports of failures of that. But we will be checking the condition surveys as part of the ongoing assessments of it.
Brilliant, thank you. I'm going to read out questions that I have, but I'm not expecting any answers because we don't have time. So if you can provide an update. And don't forget, this will be online, so you don't have to make copious notes just now. I wonder whether, and this one is more a question for members, whether we'd like a more detailed piece of work to come back on the data in the broader national highways survey. There's questions around the demographics of who fills in the survey. And that also leads me to a personal thank you to officers for the diligence you guys have showed from the chair's brief, the questions I brought up and then the improvements in the report. I'm really grateful for for that extra work you did. But I think there's probably still more around who is being affected by what issues on the highway that we could dig deeper into. I don't want to put that on officers for an immediate thing because that will be a big piece of work. But it's something I'd like us to potentially look at into the future and doing a bit more of an in-depth look at what bits of what highways affect what parts of the population. There's a question around whether officers are considering a mapping system on the website to show where potholes have been reported. We've got a lot of duplication of efforts around people reporting the same pothole 375,000 times or different people reporting it. And actually, if you could go on a website, put a pin in and know it's already been reported, then that would solve some of that. There's the lane rental scheme. I wonder if the scrutiny board would like to offer to write to the Secretary of State to request a swift resolution to our request so that we can get a move on with that. I'm seeing nods around the room. Seems like councillors are positive with that. And then I think also having listened to debate, we are as councillors wildly passionate about potholes because our residents are. And therefore I don't think that the lane rental scheme has had enough of a dig into today as what perhaps would be really useful for officers, for us to have done. And so I wonder if that would be a useful thing to come back and with a view of how it's being implemented moving forward. And on that basis as well, it would be interesting for us to know how we as councillors can have an impact on what streets are seen as the most important. Because actually, the most important streets in my ward aren't necessarily the one that officers would think because of the different ways, the different, and also times of day. There's certain streets that at certain times of day you'd want on the lane rental, which won't necessarily be the same as the times of day that you'd want on the ones leading into the city centre. So that is another query. And then I was also delighted, one of the things that I brought up in my chair's brief was around the use of the term pothole gangs, which is a really common term in highways. And it's rubbish and it's horrid. So my request is that in the ongoing review of the service, that we look at the job titles and try and make them less horrible. And I'm really happy to be personally involved in sense checking any of that, if that can provide any assistance. And then finally, my last question was around how councillors are able to put in requests. And on a similar vein to the sharepoint being put in, whether we could have a online reporting system that didn't have to go through the email system, which is less reliable than the online system, but that we could tick and say it's a councillor, put in our pay number or something to prove it's a councillor request. So it gets bumped up because by the time a resident comes to us, obviously they've tried to do it themselves, et cetera, generally already. And that I think, I've got some others, but they're not as important. So in terms of the actions from this, so I can close the item up. Are members content for us to support the continued exploration of new technologies and innovation to further improve the work of the service? Happy with that? I think that's been a real positive. Are you happy for us to request the more detailed piece of work on the NHT survey later on in next year? Yes, wonderful. We'll put the recommendation in about reviewing the job titles, if people are okay with that. Something I feel quite strongly about, but I'm not sure everyone does. I have amended the recommendation of me and councillor Prior going to see the Pothole Pro and Thermal Road Repair Two and other councillors coming along. We agreed already the inviting the utilities company. And would we, would it be useful for the scrutiny board to write to the Secretary of State? I'm looking at officers and exec member. Is that something that would be useful for us to engage with? Great. So I already had nods around the room for members. So we, I will, Becky will help me write a letter that's really useful and then I will send it off. And we'll bring back lane rental scheme some point next year. I think that is a really effective set of recommendations. And to come from officers wanting to bring something back feels incredibly positive. So thank you very much for how diligent you guys have been on this entire process. Oh, Gary wants to come back in. All right then.
Literally 20 seconds. Can I thank you for your support on this item? It's much appreciated by officers. And can I just publicly thank the team here? Asset management, highways maintenance, network management often gets defined by potholes at a very local level. But hopefully you've seen today how complex and technical it is. And I I believe I have a very strong team, one of the best, if not the best in the country. And I just want to pay public tribute to them today. Thank you.
That was a well-used 20 seconds. They do make you look good, Gary. Well done. Okay, thank you so much team. And councillor Prior, if you're all right too, stay for the next item. And I'll invite the Leeds 2023 item folk up. And we'll have sort of a minute and a half for everyone to take their seats. Thank you. Okay, thank you. While everyone's just taking their seats again, I'll do a couple of introductory comments so that that's taken care of before we begin. I just want to, once again, thank you all for coming in order to bring this paper. It's really important that it comes back to scrutiny and I'm really delighted that it is. I want to acknowledge first and foremost that Jane is here as the lead officer, but wasn't here when Leeds 2023 was taking place. So anything that she can't answer now? I think it's really important that from the gate, we know that she wasn't here and therefore can take those questions away, find out answers and things. But I don't want, I don't want Jane to feel put on the spot. And because she can't answer things now, I also don't want us to feel like we're not getting the answers we want because she can't answer it now. So I thought just setting that out beforehand would be a safer way to engage in debate today. Also, because we've got a limited number of people that were involved still working at the council, I've invited councillor Prior, deputy leader, to remain because he was a member of the Leeds Culture Trust on behalf of the council. So he may be able to give some valuable insight. And then similarly, well firstly councillor Prior, thank you for staying. Similarly, we invited councillor Cohen. For those of you that don't know, councillor Cohen is currently Lord Mayor and therefore can't take part in any frontline politics, which this would be classed as. So he isn't able to attend. But had he not been in the role that he is, I am sure he would have attended. And so therefore I don't want it to seem like he is is not engaging. To ensure we're adding value as well, because this was obviously now several years ago, I'd really welcome our focus on the legacy and what has come from 2023 and what we can make sure that if we do something similar, a big event like this across the city, that we can do better in order to make sure that we get the absolute best bang for our bucks type situation. So with that in mind, I will move to introductions of officers and exec members. And councillor Prior, as you've already introduced once, we'll start with you.
I'm councillor Jonathan Prior, deputy leader of Leeds City Council and former executive member for culture.
Good morning, I'm councillor Salma Arif. I'm the exec member for adult social care, active lifestyles and now the exec member for culture.
Morning everyone, I'm Jane Wall. I'm chief officer for active Leeds operations and culture in city development.
Good morning, I'm Hannah Farley, principal officer, culture programmes team.
Morning everyone, it's Karen Mogatroyd, I'm the international relations manager.
Lovely. Who would like to do some introductory comments? Thank you councillor Arif.
Thank you Chair. So this report provides an overview of the key legacy work streams emerging from Leeds 2023 following the publication of the impact and evaluation report in September. The evaluation report highlights the lasting impact of Leeds 2023, bringing together artists, residents, community organisations, businesses and academic institutions to deliver over 1,700 events, engaging over 2 million people in person and reaching millions more through digital platforms and broadcast media. The legacy work streams outlined in the report continue to deliver meaningful and positive outcomes for Leeds. These include but are not limited to volunteering. Over 1,000 volunteers contributed. Sorry, oh sorry, forgive me. I'll try to speak louder. Sorry Chair. So over 1,000 volunteers contributed to Leeds 2023. Building on this, the council launched the volunteer team Leeds with a new management system and a citywide engagement event supported by UKSBF funding. In terms of cultural data, during Leeds 2023, a public dashboard of data was produced and updated to monitor its impact. The council has since developed an in-house data pipelines to support strategic planning, funding bids and targeted cultural investment. Looking at international partnerships in Leeds 2023 strengthened the city's global cultural ties through networks like EuroCities and Culture Next, helping to establish Leeds' reputation internationally as a city of culture. These relationships continue to grow. In terms of access and inclusion, Leeds 2023 embedded inclusive practices. Legacy work includes integrated child-friendly Leeds, wishes into city strategies and expanding access through initiatives like the University of Leeds Access to Leeds Programme. In addition to these, the report outlines seven further legacy work streams that continue to strengthen our city's cultural infrastructure and community engagement. Chair, looking ahead, the report also connects this legacy to Leeds 400 in 2026, marking 400 years since Leeds received its royal charter. This presents a further opportunity to celebrate the city's rich heritage and culture. I look forward to the conversations we have. Thanks Chair.
Thank you. Any officers want to give comment or can I open? Jade?
I think just to say, in addition to that, the legacy work streams for me, obviously picking this up post 2023 are really powerful and really impactful. I think for cultural organisations and infrastructure in the city, what it's meant is that we have readily readily available conversations, networks and tools to enable us to look forward. We're now uniquely explicit in the Leeds ambitions for decades. The word culture, the word sport has not landed within the best city ambition. And the ability to use 2023 to really push and drive that narrative has really fed back really strongly from cultural organisations and people in the city to say, if we're so embedded and so engaged in the importance of what culture is to Leeds, why aren't we shouting about it more? So we've been really impactful in being able to get that forward-looking narrative. And I think the the legacy themes will tie really well into the Leeds 400 themes moving forward and the work that we've got to come in the future, which we'll come back and talk to you about at some point. So it's achieved a lot, but there's more to come.
Thank you. I'm going to ask councillors to indicate if they'd like to speak during this item. Now councillor Jones got straight in, so we'll move to him. And while councillor Jones is talking, I'll take any further requests to talk at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you Chair. I'm going to talk for that one, I'll show you. My question is a very simple one. From 2023, what lessons have we learnt that we can take into Leeds 400 next year? Because again, this is a fantastic opportunity to promote our city. So is there any specific lessons and is there any mistakes that we've made in particular? How we can promote ourselves better as a city? Not that we don't do it superbly already, of course.
Thank you. Are you on, Coe? Thank you for that question. And it's it's one I asked myself, to be honest, when I when I took over this role. what did we learn and what could we have done differently? I think our challenge as a city, taking the let's do it anyway approach, it did restrict our ability to draw down funding. So in terms, in comparison to years of culture across the country and other, other countries, it's probably, it's the smallest part of funding. So the 23 million that was put together and brought together to be able to deliver the year, it had an impact on that. So, you know, there's an element of, we did it anyway, but we did it anyway because it was so important to us as a city and members, you know, at the time fully backed and endorsed that approach. The challenge for us in doing that was making sure that we maximised the outcomes in relation to the budget that was set through Leeds Culture Trust, who managed obviously the year for us. It's not always, whilst we might have overreached in terms of ambition, probably the, the lack of funding was a key part of, of that. I think the other challenge for us, having a culture trust in the city that we're responsible for the direct delivery of the year of culture, probably meant that we weren't directly as engaged as we would have liked. And longer term, we've worked really hard through the legacy work streams, and this is why these are so important. We've worked really hard to maintain and improve and increase our relationships with our external partners and our international and national and local organisations. That's been a lot of hard work, but the evidence is in this paper. But I think those two things, two things for us, it's making sure that we, through Leeds 400, we reconnect some of the things that we might not have kept going quite as well as we would have liked.
Thanks Chair. And if I may as well come back on that point, for me, I think it's really important that we have more member engagement. Our members, just you all sitting in this room, you know your community is better than, than anybody. And I think, and in that you also know the grassroots organisations, you know, the history of your local wards. So I think in terms of that, that's a lesson for me that I really want to, and have been speaking to officers about in terms of just that member engagement. Because Leeds 400, it's, it's actually a really proud moment for us. And for me, I want everybody involved in that. And I think members are our key to go into those communities. So that's, that's, I think, a lesson for me that we ought to take forward. Thanks.
Thank you. It feels like the, the legacy in terms of the networking of organisations is very similar to the legacy of Covid on third sector organisations, like within our wards. And the depth of connection amongst our third sector partners post the work we did on Covid feels like that's kind of been mimicked within this culture from 2023, which can only be a good thing. Councillor Chapman?
Thank you Chair. I've got a few questions or comments. First of all, I'm really pleased to hear that members will be more engaged in Leeds 400 because I think that was a, a big gap in Leeds 2023. As you say, we know our organisations better than the many groups and individuals and we weren't included in the way we could have been. I'll run through the rest. Some of, there may be comments rather than the questions, but going through the report, I would say it is important that we embedded valuation at the start of the process and not, you know, five years in, which was, was clearly a problem. There should be opportunities. I know these projects are big and they take a long time to plan and things are put in place quite early on. But in Leeds 2023, if at any time, there'd been almost like a lease break when people sat down and said, we haven't got the money. We need to scale back, we need to do it differently, we can't do what we wanted to do. And nobody seemed to want to take that decision. And I think it's important that people are able to say, we can't do it and not be afraid to say that. So there could have been less events, but more mass participation. And I think a focus on public realm, like I say, would have been useful as well. It's all a little tenuous. There may well be long-term benefits for the city, but there's nothing that you can actually touch and feel as far as I can see. And not going into the minutiae just for two minutes, the report mentions power being put into local areas to facilitate future events. That would have been the one thing I would have wanted for my ward. Well, not the one thing, but it would have been the one tangible thing I would be able to say, we got that. Because, you know, doing generators and bringing people in, power supply is a huge problem. City Square got it. I would have liked to have had the opportunity to have it in my ward. And if that's still possible, please come and talk to me. I know where I want it. So this power supply, so when you're doing something on a field, you have to bring generators. So we, we did an outdoor cinema. I want to do that. One of the biggest barriers is actually getting generators on the site. It's a really big cost. And actually, all we need is a power, a tower with a plug into the network and you plug it in and it works. And it saves diesel emissions or, or whatever. There are environmental and financial benefits over time and it's, it's probably less than £10,000 to do it, maybe. Anyway, that's just a minutiae thing that you was on about earlier that we don't do. Is there a council evaluation or has there been an evaluation of value for money from, from our perspective? We invested £10.7 million at least. It would be nice to know what we got back from that. It mentions it briefly, but it's not detailed. And then one other thing, well, two other things. I think the role of CEO and artistic director roles, which I know won't apply if we're organising the events, but putting them together, I, I think they would have been better kept separate. So there is some tension between those two roles and, and more clarity maybe. And finally, and I know you're not going to be able to answer this one here, we've touched on this at previous scrutiny boards, hibiscus rising, I would still like to know where the money came from. Because it wasn't part of the £10.7 million. We were supposed to get it back from arts councils or wherever, but the last I heard, we'd only got less than half a million out of the 1.5 million cost or 1.2 million cost. I'd just like to know and have it documented that if we funded it as a council, it was a conscious decision by somebody and therefore the cost of Leeds 2023 was actually more like 12 or 13 million to the council and not the £10.7 million we keep mentioning. I'll shut up now.
Thank you. I wonder if it would be worth us, because I would also be interested in electrifying our green spaces. I wonder if it's actually worth us outside of here having a chat and looking at how we can get, use our SIL in order to do that. Because actually, if it's only 10 grand, I didn't even know that was a possibility. It doesn't need to come from a legacy of 2023. That's something that we can do. And you seem to know a lot about it, so I would like to know a lot about it. Jane, do you want to come in?
Thanks Chair. Thank you councillor Chapman. I know councillor Chapman and I've had several discussions about public realm and events in Rothwell, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm, I know I've supported a number of things in your, your town, which is really positive. I think just coming up, picking up on the first point around evaluation and timing of that, I think, yeah, it could have been commissioned sooner. I think part of the challenge during the year, and I probably could have picked up on this as one of our other challenges, was that Bradford 2025 was announced and actually a lot of attention got pulled away from the work that we were doing in Leeds, you know, just speaking really openly and honestly. The culture trust themselves, obviously we, we had to write the brief and make sure that we were all comfortable with what we were actually evaluating. So to make sure that we had really rich data, which, you know, the evaluation report gives us a really sound basis of what the year actually achieved. The challenge for us then is how, how do you bring that together and play back the story to people? So I think we did scale back. I know the culture trust, the number of events was scaled back quite significantly during the year. We can track that through the engagement numbers and we could, we can, we can show you where we had to, you know, make sensible decisions. There was a project board that managed the overseeing of Leeds 2023 that Karen and Hannah were in part involved in. So we did deliberately do that. We probably didn't say explicitly, but we were just managing the year as it, as it evolved, which was quite challenging. Just in terms of the funding and value for money, in terms of Leeds City Council's input, the original approval in terms of finance for Leeds City Council's allocation to Leeds 2023 was 12.7 million, which was agreed at executive board back in, I think, 2019. We reduced this the following year to buy 1.35 million to reflect the financial challenge at the time and then sought further opportunity to undertake some business pool, rates pool retention from government and 3.39 million from gain share to substitute Leeds City Council funding. So effectively, £4 million was core council budget from 2019 through and during the year of 2023. In terms of hibiscus rising, that was approved at executive board during, I think, the year of 2023 itself of about £1.83 million worth of capital works, which there was dedicated third-party applicant from the arts council, whose job was to try and recoup as much of that 1.8 million as possible. I think in total, we recovered 4.7, sorry, 473K of the funding for hibiscus rising. The agreement through the executive board report at that time was that if fundraising was insufficient to cover the costs of the artwork, then the funding shortfall would rest with LCC, which it did. And if the costs were to fall to LCC, then the shortfall would be managed by the capital programme reserve, which is where the remaining, remaining 1.4 million was taken from. And just, I'll pick up on the PowerPoint. That's a, that's probably a fairly simple conversation with parts and countryside, but we, we take that approach now in a lot of public realm spaces. We build that in to the capital works upfront because, as you say, it prevents all the cables, generators and noise associated with events.
Councillor Arif?
Yeah, I just want to pick up councillor Chapman's point about something tangible. It was different in different parts of the city, but one example I'd love to give is a organisation in my ward actually in Gipton. It's called the East Leeds Project. I don't know if you've heard of them. On the back of the 2023 funding, they converted an old school bus into a cosmic observatory and it's doing the rounds across the city. Kids absolutely love it. It's a stunning piece of legacy, I guess, from 2023. So if anybody's interested, they are taking bookings, please even just Google it, it's stunning and it's, it's, it's got sort of a lot of recognition. So I guess it was different for different people councillor Chapman, but certainly there are definitely examples of tangible things that are still ongoing till this day. And the Moon Palace is what it's called, is, is a really good example of that.
Thank you. I am, as always, aware of time. I've got three councillors left to speak, councillor Goodall, councillor Buckley and councillor Di. I'm going to get you guys to all do your questions together and then officers can reply en masse. Okay?
Thank you. I remember at the time, and it's ongoing, that some residents have a perception of arts and culture being a waste of money. I certainly don't feel that. I've worked in art and design colleges, I've worked in performing arts schools. I see the amazing effect in terms of education, how it improves people not just in the arts, but in their motivation in other subjects. And also you see things like how group arts combat loneliness, that people do group arts activities. So, you know, the whole effect on education, health, culture and tourism. So my question is, is there anything more we can do to help get across to the wider public the value of cultural activities? Can we do more to shout about the value of arts and culture?
Thank you Chair. I've got two or three questions. Page 73, references made to 31.6 million visitors a year come to Leeds. Four million more than the pandemic period before then. And I just wondered, how does this compare with other core cities? Please. Page 75, paragraph nine, the legacy work streams. A, volunteering. How many more volunteers do we now have compared to before? C, international partnerships. With whom and what benefit does it bring? E, skills development, like what? What skills? G, sustainable culture. What is that? Also, at page 80, there's reference to creative health. And I'm struggling to understand what this is all about actually. Population health, public health, arts and culture, establishing stronger links to local care partnerships. I'm not quite sure what that has to do with culture actually. And finally, at page 121, there is an inaccuracy in the report Chair. Because it says here, public support for the bid remained strong and in January 2018, a Conservative motion to continue with the bid was proposed and passed unanimously at a full council meeting. Well, I know a bit about this because I proposed it. And I think I'm right in saying that the Liberal Democrats abstained. So therefore, this report should say it was passed NEMCON. Thank you.
Well councillor Buckley, I, I have no words for the memory that you have for a motion in 2018. Folks, when you answer, there's a lot of really good points that have been made by councillor Buckley there. But in terms of the, going through the different, what they are, they're defined in the report. So if you can really minimise the talking on that element for me, that would be ideal. And then councillor Di, if you can bring your questions in as well, please.
Thank you. So two that have come up from the discussion really, the idea of the power supply was one that was originally on my list and I think that is really important and perhaps for a bigger conversation across the city because it certainly addresses our emissions, doesn't it? So I think that's worthy of some larger discussions. Another one councillor Arif about the Leeds 400 and wards. In, certainly in our ward, there are already discussions taking place about things that organisations would like to do. So it would be really good to, to reflect that in our planning for 400 so that we're, we're aware of that and it becomes a joined up thing rather than a, here's an additional thing. And then two that I had, following councillor Bithal's suggestion that we focus on what do we do better? Not specifically about Leeds 400, but also about anything that we do in the cultural space. The first one is sustainability. So we've, we've got a lot of learning, haven't we, in terms of, well, permanent power I've already mentioned, but transport, which is a massive issue in terms of emissions and supply chains. So what can we learn and what can we really build on to improve sustainability in all the cultural work we do? And then another one, which has already been briefly looked at, is the idea of, of career opportunities. There's a news report this morning about keeping, well specifically about the games industry, but, but keeping talent here rather than people having to go to London, which is a, a constant comment. So what opportunities do we have for work experience? I know there's a reference made to working with colleges. Yeah, can we really maximise that and, and keep opportunities here? Thank you.
I'm just going to respond to councillor Goodall's point first of all, because he's absolutely right about some of those benefits, particularly to children and young people. And I just want to talk briefly about a specific project called In Harmony from Opera North, which has been going for a few years now, it's still going. And it's taking singers, it's taking instruments into schools, particularly focusing on areas of deprivation. And it's not just a one-off, we're doing one session, here's a nice sing song and off we go. It's about consistent work in the school, going back and back, giving these kids new skills. And you can see that the huge benefit to those young people, whether it be in kind of mental health, in confidence. Personally, I believe in arts for art's sake, you know, just the joy of children enjoying it is enough. But the University of Leeds has done a study on some of these children before and after they've had this intervention in the arts. And their maths and their English results have tangibly increased as well. I mean, anyone who's learnt to, to read music knows how much maths is involved. And it's, it's part of that development of children. It's kind of linking up all those pathways, bringing new skills. Art doesn't just improve children's performance in the arts, it improves across the board. And we've had some tangible studies from the university that shows that. And we've had some tangible studies from the university that shows that. And I think so much of what we did in Leeds 2023 was pointed at schools and young people. And that's the legacy for me. That's an enormous point of the benefit that those children will have for the rest of their lives.
Can I bring Karen in? Because Karen's got a personal appointment, needs to leave very shortly. But on the, Karen focused on the international relationship works that we do.
Yes. So just to really emphasise the fact that prior to the bid phase, we really were struggling, I think, to get our international cultural relationships to produce benefit for the city. But we rejoined EuroCities, we rejoined Culture Next, all of which are giving us a really good platform for our international cultural networks. In terms of Leeds 2023 itself and bringing in all of those artists to work with local organisations, all of those partnerships were embedded with local organisations. And so they now continue to work in partnership, which has brought lots of inspiration to our local artists. It's brought lots of inspiration and new audiences to the population of Leeds. And really importantly, we've got new international funders, such as the Embassy of the Netherlands, which continue to fund a lot of our cultural organisations. And these partnerships have contained, just recently, we've had partnerships in Leeds International Film Festival right now, Leeds Light Night, Transform Festival, all as a result of these partnerships and with these new funding streams as well from international funders. So it's all really part of our international cultural diplomacy work, feeding into the economic vision, helping to raise the profile of the city.
Can I pick up on firstly, the tourism numbers and data from councillor Buckley? We are seeing Leeds slightly booking the national trend at the moment in terms of city centre footfall and visitor numbers. So city centre footfall continues to rise in Leeds as opposed to West Yorkshire and other cities. So we're really benefiting from a year of culture, but also the city's infrastructure and what it offers to people who want to come and visit Leeds. It's really quite impactful what we have here. And I think the more that we can promote what we have and who we are, the better for the city and the better for the future of the city. In terms of, I'll pick up on some of your other points. Volunteering, that's 17,000, almost 18,000 hours of volunteers during Leeds 2023. It's probably in FTE numbers, it's probably about a million pounds worth of funding that went into the year of culture, which we have directly through those volunteers. The number of volunteers on our Rostify system now is over 3,000, which is really powerful. We use volunteers across all of our museums and gallery sites, delivering a number of activities. We use them during Light Night, events across the city, Summer Breeze, events in Millennium Square, et cetera. So, you know, it's a really positive part of what we do and what we offer. So the volunteering is something that we've really worked strongly with voluntary action leads as well. So there's a real powerful partnership between us there. Let me pick up on, do you want to pick up on?
Yeah. Sorry, if I could just jump back very quickly just to add some additional information to councillor Goodall. I'm on the management committee for Leeds Arts Health and Wellbeing Network, which is mentioned in the report. And there's been significant work going on across the city as a result of the legacy of 2023. We would be delighted to accept any additional help in relation to advocacy, the national picture and international picture actually around the benefits of cultural engagement, both as participants but also as audience members and so on, to people's wellbeing, particularly in the arena of mental health, is really significant. And Leeds as a city actually has historically excellent work in this area. And in spite of financial challenges, is working really hard to kind of increase that. And we're one of the leading partners in a West Yorkshire collaboration to look at health and how culture can benefit it. So outside of scrutiny, great to pick that up with you. In relation to skills, we're also, which was councillor Buckley's, one of your questions that you asked, there's also considerable activity going on across the north of England with some work to bring investment. And West Yorkshire is one of the regions in terms of creative industries, actually councillor Di, you mentioned, in terms of gaming, that there is investment that's coming. And part of our legacy work has been to be investment ready, to work with our colleagues in the Combined Authority to see how Leeds can bring in money to support engagement and talent retention of young people. So part of our Creative Skills Festival work has been to look at opportunities for younger people or people looking to sort of redirect their careers. Yeah. Anything further you want to add, Jane?
I'll pick up on the sustainability point because, well, sustainability is twofold, isn't it? It's how do we sustain our cultural infrastructure and our cultural organisations for the future? And I'll come back to you on that, councillor Di. But the approach in terms of sustainability from a legacy point of view has been about how do we make our events more carbon neutral and more environmentally friendly, which is what Sustainable Arts in Leeds actually do. So the section that you've got there in under 16, councillor Buckley, sets out the work that we do in partnership with Sale, who are really impactful. And their evaluation report of their year during 2023 is attached at a link. So you can actually see their outputs and their outcomes. But they're really positive and proactive and they're working with us across our Leeds 400 year as well. So we're looking at how do we do a wider programme within communities to engage and empower communities to think about how they embed that approach within their organisations as well. So I think finally, just to pick up on the health point, which is a really complex area actually, creative health and the work that we're doing with WICA, but One Creative North across the whole of the north of England. So there's a real focus about the benefit of culture and cultural activity. And councillor Prior touched on some of it in relation to music. But it's much wider than that. Being involved in performance, the arts, being able to engage in something where you feel included and not excluded. The arts and culture is a really powerful tool to use. So the challenge for us is how do you demonstrate the benefit? And it's a really difficult area for us to be able to say that. But the fact that people want to engage, so most of us have got children, grandchildren, nieces, nephews that are involved in sport, physical activity and culture. And it is just part of who they are because they see, they get the benefit from it on a personal level. So how do we capture that and start to be able to articulate it to government? To say, how do we work with the NHS and public health, which, you know, there are ongoing conversations with organisations and the director of public health in Leeds as to how can we be more explicit about the benefits of culture in the city to our people through those routes so that we can attract more funding to engage and provide more opportunities? I pick up on the education piece and retention also. I think what's really important for us as a city, we've been really, really proactive in being clear about our offer as a city from a business point of view. Our business retention is extremely high and we've attracted a lot of new national portfolio organisations, National Poetry Centre and British Library North, but also the likes of Channel Four coming to Leeds and other organisations, the Bank of England, et cetera. They come because we have skills and we have talent, but we also have a vibrant city. And that kind of DNA of what Leeds is and what we provide is essential in retention. But it's also essential in attracting more visitors and more income and more visitor spend to the city.
Brilliant. Thank you. Councillor Arif, I saw you indicating and I'm going to come back to you. But because of the lack of time, I'm going to quickly go through what I've heard as recommendations. And then you can also comment whether you're happy with those recommendations at the same time. Okay? Excellent. Thank you. You can come back on that at the same time. So in terms of what I've heard from members around potential recommendations, the main one is to note and provide comment on the contents of the report, which we've done. There's a recommendation coming to me around power supply. And actually, as an infrastructure board, if that is a wider public realm issue, actually that could come back next year and we can have a discussion on how we best do that across the city. That members have, that we make the request that members have better communication on cultural events moving forward. That seemed to be something that was brought up by a couple. And then finally, the Leeds 400, I wonder whether the recommendation, I don't think necessarily there would be the time for it to effectively come back to board, but whether it comes to me as scrutiny chair and then should there be a need, I can pull together a workshop on Leeds 400 so that you guys know that the things that you have been saying to me are being fed back regularly to officers. Is those three okay with members? Is that a good estimation of the discussion? And with that, councillor Arif, you can reply on anything you want and also whether you're happy with the recommendations.
Yeah, absolutely. More than happy. I think it'd be brilliant idea to have a workshop on Leeds 400, as councillor Chapman has reiterated, really important to have members involved. And actually, as an exec member, it's really important for me, and I know I've spoken to Jane about this, that we do have input from members. Just coming back to councillor Buckley's point about sort of what's health got to do with culture. I mean, look, culture's subjective. It means different things to different people. And I guess one example for you, councillor Buckley, was actually in Hunstletown Riverside, the host there, Karen Peters and the Yank organisation, Hamara Healthy Living, took wellbeing as one of its themes, offering drop-in sessions for yoga, history and sketching work and wellbeing mindfulness tours on the river. So it was culture but also the wellbeing side of things. And it's important that, you know, we acknowledge that as that work did happen. For somebody who perhaps is at home, you know, through 2023, through their host in Hunstletown Riverside, were able to go and do a bit of yoga and go for a walk, part of 2023, I think, is really important because it does impact your wellbeing as well. So those connections were certainly there. And it's, I mean, have a read of the full report, it's all in there. Thank you.
Thank you. And then finally, the other thing that it might be worth me doing is if I link Jane up with some of the academics that have been working on the obesity work that I do as Obesity Champion, and being able to quantify the cost of things that aren't quantifiable economically. Usually, there's a whole academic sphere around that that's developing at the moment. So it might be that there's something that can be worked on there. Would anyone from the officers or exec members like to make any final comments before I close this down 15 minutes late? That was the correct answer. So on that, I'm going to give you guys four minutes for a comfort break, not five. And we're going to come back as soon as possible to move on to our final agenda item or substantive item. Thank you. In terms of an introduction, we're just starting substantive item number 10. I'm enjoying the sun shining on me like, this is, no, I quite like it. In terms of the introductory comments, I just wanted to, again, and I've said this about a couple of the reports today, thank you for proactively coming to us. I think it's so great that the scrutiny board has got to the point where officers don't feel threatened to come and they want to come and they want to seek our opinions and we want to work collaboratively. And I just think that is absolutely brilliant. As we're considering the issues raised, I encourage members to consider how we can add value to the work reflected in the report and whether there's areas where we feel the service could be doing more, how members can be advocates for a place-based approach to cultural learning. We've said previously, we know our communities. And also just on the minutiae, on figure 13, the dates that are mentioned refer to academic years rather than calendar years. I got myself wildly confused. Find out, not financial years. So financial years, not academic and not calendar. It turns out I'm still confused. Luckily though, we have officers to introduce themselves and the things so that they can give us the information and I can be de-confused. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm David Hope's Head of Service for Leeds Museums and Galleries.
And hello, I'm Kate Fellows. I'm head of learning and access for Leeds Museums and Galleries.
Lovely, thank you. Who would like to make some introductory comments? Councillor Arif?
Thank you, Chair. So the report highlights the vital role Leeds Museums and Galleries play in delivering cultural learning across our city. It also outlines how the service evaluates the long-term impact of its programmes for children, young people and adults. A wealth of research shows that cultural education significantly enhances life chances and helps individuals to develop a strong sense of identity, belonging and place, qualities that underpin wellbeing and empower people to become active and engaged citizens. So what are Leeds Museums and Galleries already doing? Our eight venues engage over 46,000 schoolchildren annually, support the development of over 350 teachers and welcome over 105,000 visitors in family groups. Our digital platform, mylearning.org, is a national teaching resource that reaches 1.8 million users each year. It connects educators with heritage organisations from the British Library to Conwy Valley Museum, providing high-quality, accessible learning materials. LMG's programmes are recognised both nationally and internationally for their innovation and impact. They not only support individuals and communities in Leeds, but also help shape the future of the heritage and cultural education sector. This report demonstrates how Leeds Museums and Galleries continues to deliver meaningful, measurable outcomes through their work, and I look forward to discussing how we can further support and strengthen this, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Any officers like to give any introductory comments?
I was just going to say very briefly, the last time I was here at scrutiny panel was in March and we were talking about community education, which is a strength of the service. Cultural learning is also a strength of the service. The thing that links them together, I think, is the emphasis through the strategy that we have, deepening connections, widening impact, on the focus of quality interactions with individuals. We are doing a strategic review of the service at the moment and we are trying to clarify what our purpose is, our purpose within the council and our purpose more generally. I think cultural learning defines us as a civic service more than anything else, really. So the reason why Leeds has 1.3 million objects in its very special locations is primarily about learning. So learning from the past, learning about previous citizens of Leeds, learning about the world. So cultural learning is at the heart of everything that we do as a service.
Okay, in which case, I will open it up to members' questions, please. If you don't start, I'm going to start and you know what that means. Okay, councillor Chapman, you can go first. David, can you just turn your mic off for me, love, please?
Sorry, yeah. I found this really interesting. I didn't know about it, really. Maybe I should have done, but I didn't. Obviously, I know about some of the venues or locations. What I found interesting was the, I can't find it in here now, but it talks about a box that goes to the school with things in that the kids can, I just wondered, could you go on the road and go to community events? Because we have several in Rothwell and we also have a really good, large venue where you could maybe do one-off events and get people in. So I'd love to support that if that's possible.
Definitely. We do come to community events. You just need to kind of give us a ring and we will get those in and bring out some objects for the communities to see, to handle. The real strength that we have as a service is that we use accessioned museum objects. So that has the legal weight of us having to look after these objects as a city. And they're your objects, they belong to your constituents. And we want as many people to hold them and to love them as much as we do.
That's brilliant. I will get in touch if there was the potential to link it to the local area as well, because you must have things that belong to Rothwell or wherever, that would be even better and tell our history at the same time.
Yep, we do indeed. We would definitely bring out local things. Our database called TMS, the Museum System, I mean, it's labelled, does what it says on the tin, doesn't it? We can search things by local area, from where they've been donated or where they were made, or something that has a history to it, that we would then bring up as really local to them. When we do work with schoolkids, that's what we do, we take objects out that are relevant to them. So it really makes their history meaningful and we can go, that was from that house over there that you can see from your school windows. And if we look at this map, look at how the area's changed and see how things fit together. That's definitely what we do. That's why we give them that place-based kind of approach, which we know really works.
I love it when museums and galleries come. You guys are so excited all the time. It's just beautiful to see. I've got councillor Leyton and then I'll bring in councillor Di and then I'm having a go because I've been last each time today.
Thank you, Chair. I'm actually just looking at the part here which is talking about how the ancient Egyptian box is linking to key stage two history. And I just wondered if there are any parts of the curriculum where you feel we've got gaps that need addressing. Obviously, you know, ancient Egypt's a very exciting topic, but as you get up maybe into sort of key stage three, key stage four, have we got any gaps there?
That is a, it is a good question. The way we fulfil the gaps, actually, where we do have them, is that we contemporary collect around the communities within the city now. And often we collect things that are multiples of the same thing, if they're small. Obviously, we're not going to collect something that's like the size of a loco, for instance. But if we've got something that's ephemera pamphlets, for instance, we'll collect five and two will go into schools' loans boxes, two will go into community loans boxes and one will sit in the discovery centre, on the basis that five will be destroyed over time because we're handling them and things like that. In terms of the gaps that we can see at the moment, we work really closely with teachers to identify what those are. The membership scheme with the loans boxes is primary school orientated. With secondary, we don't do the boxes and we don't do boxes because it's too easy for a flight case of real objects to get lost in a massive secondary school. So what we do is we do outreach and we work really closely with those teachers as to what will prove their teaching points or be useful for them and then augment that with our curator's subject knowledge. It means that with 1.3 million objects, we can pretty much hit every curriculum area, given the right time to be able to think around what we could use and how we could use it and what's the best format of doing it. So some of it might be a workshop where we take objects in, some of it might be digital images, some is a combination of all of those kinds of things. And some of it, we might say, actually, you do need to come on site to the school and you need to be able to see this and part of that immersive experience is, because I can't get a loco in the boot of my Fiat 500, basically. But to answer, that's a long answer to, we don't have any gaps that we've identified at the moment, but if we do, we would work with teachers to fill those.
Thank you. I was a young Egyptologist at the British Museum when I was a child, just in case anyone wanted to know. In terms of the, the, what a varied life. In terms of the gaps, one thing we spoke about in Chair's brief, and I don't know if you want to touch on it here, is that GCSE curriculum, the difference between optional modules and specific modules and the different exam boards and how they're differently facilitated. It might be useful for us to just touch on that because I was impressed with the answer.
Yep. So we work quite closely with the OCR exam board at Temple Newsome House. So any of the schools in the city doing OCR, GCSE, history, come and visit Temple Newsome. They do a series of workshops over the course of the day, looking at the house over time. And then we give the students tickets back to come back for revision and they do come back, quite a high proportion of them come back through the doors, which always genuinely surprises us. And I know they're passionate students, GCSE students, but actually, they will walk back in in small groups of three or four to do revision before their exams. We would like to do more like that across the other exam boards and not just for history. So for instance, our natural science curator, because we work closely with our collections colleagues by the time we get to upper secondary and into colleges, our natural science curator ran a programme called Dead Inspiring a few years ago, which was about getting girls into science using the entomological or insect collections. And we'd like to do more of that, so we're looking at how we embed that. The logistical challenges with some of that and working on a scale of GCSE is that whereas a primary school might have a three-form intake or even a four-form intake and they're happy to split their visits over a couple of days, actually, when you get to secondary, they really want to bring out several coach loads and the entire year group. So you're talking about somewhere around 300 students on site at any given point for the day. And there's very few of our venues where we could actually fit 300 students in one day in one place. And Temple Newsome is one of those places. Lotherton, we can, and the industrial museum at Armley Mills, we can as well. But yes, that revision side and coming back as well, so that it's not just a one-off visit. All of this is predicated on the fact that we like to build relationships with our schools and with our communities because we know that long-term work really helps and it really helps embed the cultural capital, which means that they have more successful lives as they go through their life.
Brilliant, thank you. Councillor Di.
Thank you. It was a really, really entertaining report to read and I particularly liked the pictures. I mean, if there's anything that shows the value of the work that's being done, it's those pictures and the kind of the wow faces on young people. It was really, really nice to see those as well. My question is about the data in figure four about where pupils are engaging from in different wards, which is quite varied, isn't it? And I just wondered if you had anything behind that to say why some are engaging more than others? And then a kind of a follow-up from that really is that you mentioned relationships with schools and how important that is, and clearly it is. And do you have relationships on kind of different levels with different schools, you know? And if there are schools that are less engaged, is there work that can be done to bring them more on board?
Brilliant, thank you. Interestingly, councillor Biffle raised the same thing in the Chair's briefing, which is, and how you phrased it was, what are Bermondofs and Richmond Hill, Putzy and Roundhay doing really well? Because in that figure four, they're the ones that stand out on the graph. So I dig a bit of delving into the, into the statistics and the data. Partly for Bermondofs and Richmond Hill, they have more children in the ward aged five to 19 than some of the other wards. So they've got over 6,000, whereas the average seems to be about 4,000 and something. So there is a statistical thing there. Both Putzy and Roundhay have around the 4,000 mark, so what's going on there as well? Well, in terms of the schools that are in those three wards, more of them have had stronger engagement with us longer. So more of those schools have been member schools or have had curriculum planning into their staff teams over the last few years, over the course of the last five years, maybe. So we've embedded the cultural life of the city into their curriculums, so they're building visits on visits on visits. This data also includes things like assemblies and outreach and where they have engaged with the loans boxes and the membership scheme. So I think as a combination of those two things, that's what those three wards are doing particularly strongly in terms of the relationships. So it's those long-term things. And in terms of the relationships, yes, we have different relationships with all of the schools in the city, of which there are many. Some of them have that really in-depth relationship with us and have been members or had curriculum planning. And the membership scheme's been running since 2018 and we've had a few schools that are, have been there since the start. Actually, whilst we love having those long-term relationships and it's great that they do, we also want to see a bit of a churn rate because otherwise we can only ever take 22 member schools at a time and we don't want to super-serve those 22 members. So we need a little bit of churn within that pool. Then we have some schools that don't visit. However, when I've had conversations with them, they visit other sites or other services or other venues. And as long as they're getting their cultural capital somewhere, I don't mind where it is. I prefer it if it was with us because, you know, I'm frankly unbiased. But if it's not with us and they do go to the Thackeray or they go to York Museum Trust or Bradford, at least they're doing it somewhere. So as soon as they kind of said that and like, that's fine, you've got those relationships elsewhere. But across a three-year kind of span, we do see about 98% of the schools in the city. We calculate it on a three-year span because some schools do two-year curriculums and cycles that run on different annual things. And then there are, but our reach of the schools in an annual year is about 70% something. It ranges between 70 and 80% on an annual basis. So we see 70 to 80% of the primary schools in the city every year. Some of them do just come off on a one-off visit, more of them are using us more broadly. What we have seen more recently is the cost of living has not helped school finances and they don't want to ask their parents for contributions for visits, is we had some schools that were visiting us six, seven times a year over the course of the academic year. They tend to be dropping down a bit. They're dropping down to five visits in the year, so they're knocking out one to two visits and the ones that are coming four times are coming three. But we haven't seen the knock-on where those who are visiting just once go down to zero, for instance. They're still visiting, which is still keeping our visitor numbers consistent, it's just hitting some of those repeats a little bit. But that is a financial thing, that's not necessarily a, us building a relationship thing with them. But there are other ways we can help, so we signpost them to like My Learning and things which is free.
Thank you. And that leads to my questions. Buckle up, folks. Okay, so on paragraph six, we have got five or 10 minutes realistically, so I'll do it, one question and then a quick answer from you and do it that way, just so that we can keep track. So in paragraph six, can officers reflect on any evidence in relation to, it talks about the impact on children, but I'd like to know whether we've had any thoughts around the impact on attachment? So for me, I spent a lot of time with my new kids when we adopted them at Lotherton because there's a lot of stuff that you can get a lot of attachment from, talking about family, talking about history, talking about, but also the physicality of pushing them on swings. Our places create a place that attachment, and is that, is that quantified within the service, I guess, or recognised?
Recognised, definitely. Quantified, not so much. And actually, after we had the Chair's conversation, I went away and started looking for national and international research to back it up. And there's very little out there in terms of attachment in those kind of situations. However, informally, we know that spaces like art space in Leeds Art Gallery and Lotherton and the Discovery Centre are all used by our families that might be going through some kind of care process, whether this is formally or informally. So formally, we work with the virtual school and in fact, starting in January, we're working with the virtual school and Leeds City College at Discovery Centre with students leaving care or just about to leave care and refugee and asylum seeker young people around using museum objects for forming bonds and forming that kind of literacy stuff around it as well. We know that that work has a ripple effect into our family programmes and when we, we know we had formal relationships with parts of children's services signpost, as was in terms of, we're saying to the, to the office, to our fellow officers, these spaces are there for you to use, you can be free there. And actually, the relation, the feedback we got from the workers was that they are a really beneficial space to be in, but we've never formally monitored it beyond asking for a few quotes from those families or from those workers. But it is something we'd definitely like to do. It's an area of work we'd like to definitely look at some more formalised research around.
I wonder if that could be a recommendation then from the scrutiny board, in the sense that one of the things that this scrutiny board and the wider scrutiny boards in Leeds are looking to do more effectively is work with academics and be research-based in what we're doing. And it's even things that people wouldn't necessarily consider, the fact that Lotherton and Temple Newsome are for a lot of the city, a bit of a drive away. Actually, kids, when they have attachment issues, find it much easier to discuss things when they're in the car. And it's that sort of stuff that wouldn't be quantified unless you did that deeper research. So perhaps hooking up with some of our contacts at the university with the museums and galleries might be a way forward. In paragraph 11, we've got the list of team principals and it would be interesting to know how much kids have engaged with that and whether you've done any work with the voice and influence team around putting those together.
We do work with the voice and influence team quite closely in terms of programming and taking on board all of the things that come out of their surveys, like child-friendly leads and things like that. We feed all of that into our work. For these specific principals, I'll be honest and say that we haven't. We sat round as a team and decided that this is what we value and this is what we wanted to do. We're definitely open to working with some young people to check those through.
Excellent. And I wonder if that would also be a recommendation, to be able to throw our enthusiasm behind that voice and influence work. Paragraph 2.3, the, it talks about rober, ro, robust, robust research methodologies that are applied within the service. I just wondered if you wanted to add a bit more meat to the bones on that. We talked in Chair's brief about Rosen shine and what pedagogical research methods you guys are using to make sure that it's super effective. I'm extending the question while you search for the paragraph. 12.3, not 2.3.
Yes, definitely. So about 2014, we sat round the table Yes, definitely. So about 2014, we sat around the table as a learning team and said, we want to underpin all of our programmes with robust research, so where do we start? We'd already done a piece, started a longitudinal piece of research around with send settings about literacy attainment. And we could see the impact that that was really having. We did it for several reasons. We wanted to quality assure ourselves, for a start. But also, we wanted to create things we could advocate for that would put Leeds on the map in terms of cultural learning. So we set out with a slightly cynical head as well of if we do research, it gives us something to talk about at conferences and something to go for for awards, which therefore says, ooh, look at Leeds. So that's what we did. In terms of those research methodologies, we then picked a series of things that we wanted to look at. So more send practice and inclusive and accessible practice. We're currently doing one on early years, we've done teacher training, a place-based learning. The methodologies that sit behind them are all different depending on what we want to look at and what we want to find out. Sometimes we work with research partners like universities, sometimes we're working with external practitioners, sometimes we're running them inside, within internal things. Where we've started to unpick this as we've gone through over the years is actually to get really strong data that's of a robust scientific nature, you need to start doing double-blind testing and things, which isn't very fair when you're working in a primary school, for instance. Because you can't say, oh, that class over there can't have this engagement, but this class can, to compare the results. And that is always the problem that comes with arts research is actually, you can't just stop people having certain bits of engagement. So we've started to work through that as we've gone through the years informally. As a service, we're also looking at a research strategy, which will bring it all together in terms of what we do collections-wise and our curatorial research, as well as our learning practice. But we probably need to look a little bit more formally at that, but some of that will come out of the research strategy.
Thank you. This is a personal experience that my family have had around, and I've brought it up with officers previously, around the impact of Covid and the way that we now teach children limiting their ability to accept being yelled at. Kids in schools don't really get yelled at very much anymore. And when they come to the Abbey Mills, not Abbey Mills, Abbey House, they have a school set up and they're shown how school would have been then. I think there needs to potentially be something around, because the jump now, when we were at school, we were yelled at quite a lot. I mean, I was, I never got detention and I was still yelled at quite a lot. So therefore, the jump back to that was much less than it is now. So it's also about how we amend the way that we we develop our curriculum work now to fit with the kids now, as well as from the position of what they need to learn. So whilst I had got loads of input about the Abbey House stuff, and that was really great and really helpful, I think it's probably wider in how we make sure that we don't accidentally traumatised because the children are a different starting position now than they used to be.
Yeah, we certainly don't want, we're not setting out to traumatised children, I should say. Yes, in terms of the immersive experiences that we have across the service, we have two in-person workshops. One is a World War II one at Lotherton, where our staff are in role and the children arrive as evacuees. And the second is at Armley Mills, Leeds Industrial Museum, that is the schoolroom one, where they have a Victorian schoolroom experience. We are very well aware of the difficulties that we've got in the set of children we've got now. We can see it coming through multiple programmes. For those two, though, what we do is we talk to the teachers really robustly in advance when they book. Because for the World War II one at Lotherton, any children who've migrated as a result of conflict, it could be really triggering. And various other things, where they might bubble up to the surface, all kinds of things. So we very carefully talk to the teachers about what the workshop involves. We moderate it if it needs moderating, or we might say, actually, right now, from what you've told us, this is not the workshop for you. How about we do a World War II handling session instead? That's not the in-person thing. So we will change things as we go along. We are looking at the Leeds Industrial Museum workshop and the World War II workshop, but particularly the Leeds Industrial Museum one as well, from the point of view of how much of our empire and colonial histories that we fit into that as well. It gets mentioned, but the workshop was originally designed for probably year four or year five, and we've now got year one and year twos coming through. So our facilitators and our learning staff do moderate it depending on what's happening. But I will say some of them are slightly more enthusiastic than others and might not quite read the room. So we need to check on our internal processes, that they're getting the right information, because that conversation might have happened with the learning officer and then it's the casual member of staff delivering the workshop. So it is being looked at in the round. We have just trained our entire workforce with trauma-sensitive training, because we are finding that generally, more general members of the public are coming to our doors with more severe needs and representing those through behavioural things as they're coming through the doors. And wanting help as well, because we are safe, trusted spaces with people in a council uniform who will help you. So I wear another hat and the safeguarding lead for the service. So I have a lot of conversations around that, which is why I said that we definitely needed to do the trauma-sensitive training. And the learning team are very aware of the five kind of aces for children, which is the adverse childhood experiences. So we will feed all of that in. But yeah, we will check on our internal processes. But there is a wider review going on about some of those workshops anyway.
That's great. And perhaps a recommendation, because we know that there's going to be that wider cultural review, is that that feeds in and therefore comes back to us? Because it wasn't just the kids, like if my kids had been traumatised by it, I'd have been like, that's very reasonable. They've got, because of their history, there's a potential, but it was other children as well, you see. Okay, and then how, I thought it was really interesting, and this will be my last question, I think, because I'm running out of time, have run out of time. I was really interested in the work that you guys do around work experience. And one of the things that I brought up previously was, how do we manage the expectations? We know that getting a job in the culture, and specifically the museums and galleries, is so incredibly challenging. We put loads of people through work experience, and then the chances are there won't actually be enough jobs for them. So how do we manage those expectations with the young people we're assisting? Thank you.
Very carefully and very openly and very honestly and transparently. I will say to anybody who comes to me for careers advice or careers talks, it is a very hard sector to get into. It's highly competitive. I have 150 applications for a learning officer job if I put one out. And actually, we don't have that much of a churn rate. There aren't necessarily the entry-level posts and things like that. So we have that as a conversation, but we have that as a conversation in amongst the wider skillset that people can gain. So it is like, there are skills that you can gain in the cultural sector or by experience with us as cultural organisations that will help you in whatever job that you go into. So whether that is that you decide you do want a job in culture or whether you're going to have a job in science, or whether you're going to go into teaching or something else, it is going to help you be able to do that. But when I'm talking one-to-one and again with groups of students, I always say to them, when's your red line? When's your time at which you can't afford to keep banging on this door? What's your plan B if you can't get into the sector? So we have those kind of conversations to manage expectations. But whilst saying, please come and get experience with us, please come and volunteer with us or have placements with us, and say something like the Careers For All Programme, which is around employability and skills for our young adults with additional needs and disabilities. Actually, for them, it's not about necessarily getting a job in the cultural sector or anything like that. It's about can they have lunch in the staff room with other members of staff they don't know? Can they travel to work independently and get there on time? It's about those workplace skills that we're building in. What we do is the cultural sector that other employers can't necessarily and don't have the time to be able to do, is give the support to those young people. So over the course of Careers For All, we've had lots of young people take positive progressions into work and into study. Some who've gone on to do degrees that we didn't, that had said that that was never going to be an option for them beforehand. Some who've gone into employment with HMRC or the NHS. But it's because we've given them the skills and the boost to be able to do that. That's one particular programme. But as I say, with our mainstream ones, I am very open that it's a tough sector to get into. And we'll give people the best start they can, but they need to do some thinking about what their, what their life could hold as well, that isn't just this.
Brilliant, thank you. The other one was around the Home Education Team, knowing how to promote engagement with the cultural learning programme, and whether there's anything that we can do as a scrutiny board to assist that promotion within that team.
Yep. We're in touch with the Home Education Team and we send them drip-feed through our programmes as they come on. We do a monthly home education workshop somewhere across the service for open families to just book on through. It's not Eventbrite, the other system that we use. But we also will, but we'll also take on groups of home educators. So if they're organised into a formal group, we'll effectively do a workshop for them in their individuality. But we do feed that through into the teams. Any more contact with any other people is always useful. We'll send it to as many places as we can. They are phenomenally popular. We could fill the home educator things more, but we don't have capacity to deliver more than one a month at the moment.
Brilliant, thanks Kate. Would anyone like to make any final comments before I summarise the recommendations?
Yes, thank you Chair. I just want to say thank you to Kate. Really helpful discussion and evidently quite a lot has been done. Really proud actually of our service and our officers in terms of how you are conducting, you know, the work that's been happening. It's really, really good. Probably one of the best, if I'm being honest, and maybe a bit parochial with my own portfolio. Obviously, can't be complacent, there's a lot more to do, but I just want to say thank you. It's not easy work in the context of sort of the financial constraints that we do have. So thank you Kate and thank you David for your support as well. Thank you.
Lovely. In terms of the recommendations then from the board, if we go back to the front of the report, the recommendations are, members are asked to comment on whether there are additional ways in which Leeds museums and galleries could be evaluating the impact of cultural learning for the benefit of the city. Members are, which we've commented on, members are asked to advise on any additional cultural learning programming from Leeds museums and galleries that would benefit, be of benefit to the city, which we've talked about. Members are asked to advise on any additional ways in which Leeds museums and galleries could advocate for cultural learning programming within or outside Leeds City Council. The additional recommendations that have come from within the meeting are a recommendation around engaging with the Voice and Influence Team on those principles. Looking at the school workshops and wider review of that within the wider review of the cultural programme and having that come back to us. And then the linking of museums and gallery service to the university contacts that we have within scrutiny in order to try and get that really decent piece of review on attachment. I would love us, especially as there isn't the reports already out there, to really be at the cutting edge of that, because we are in outstanding children's services. So it's right that we have that focus throughout Child Friendly Leeds. Is there anything that I have not captured in those recommendations from any members? Are officers content with those recommendations? Are members content with those recommendations? Game on. Okay. In which case, thank you so much for bringing this to us, and hopefully that has added value for you guys. The item 11 is the next meeting, which is on Wednesday, the 26th of November, and it's a double feature. We have part one at 9:30 to 11 on inclusive growth and the workplace levy consultation. And then part two from 11:30 to 1:30 on bus provisions with all of our partners. So a lot to look forward to on Wednesday, the 26th of November. Do please be at the pre-meeting for 9:15, so that we can get as much time as possible within the meeting. And with that, we'll close. And see you on Friday for the workshop.